Mr. President.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation by Councilmember Festerson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the final council meeting before the Morrody holiday, I'd just like to take a moment of silence for those that have served our country and died for their country, as well as note the passing of Bob Boozer, Omaha great, a real ambassador and icon and a person that so many looked up to and that so many respected. So just a moment of silence for those, for him and his family, as well as our veterans. Thank you.
City clerk certifies publication in Daily Record, the official newspaper of the city of Omaha, on May 18, 2012. Notice, Ray, pre-council and regular city council meetings, May 22, 2012.
Welcome and good afternoon. This Omaha City Council meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debative issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. Ms. -- excuse me, Madam Clark.
Zoning ordinances on final reading and planning board attachments will take items five through eight. Item five is an ordinance to rezone property located northeast of 108 the Melondo Streets from AG to DR. Six is to R4. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item seven is a resolution approving the plat entitled Andreessen Meadows located northeast of 180th and Melondo Streets. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item eight is approval of subdivision agreement.
Public hearing on agenda items number five, six, seven, and eight begin now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. Jeff Elliott, E&amp;A Consulting, 330 North 117th Street, here to represent the applicant. Our final plat is in conformance with the preliminary plat, so I would just request your approval. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Will you approve?
Roll call.
Gray, Jerome, Stothert, Thompson, Festerson, Grenant, Mr. President.
Yes.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held May 29, 2012, agenda item numbers nine through 10 shall be laid over three weeks to June 12, 2012, for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held May 29, 2012, agenda item number 11 shall be laid over for three weeks to June 12, 2012. Liquor. We'll take items 12 and 13 together. Item 12 is a Class I for Nodo Zestos Operating LLC. DBA Zestoblat Beer and Table, 610 North 12th Street, for a Class I liquor license. A is a communication from Jay Davis regarding permits. Item 13 is the catering license for the same.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 12 and 13 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific. Mr. President, members, I'd like to, since I'm intimately involved with this project, I'd like to take just a couple of seconds for a few thank yous for all the support we've had for this project. First would be the Mayor Settle, Chief of Staff Steve Altman. I would also like to thank the planning, Rick Cunningham, and even Chad Weaver. We had some disagreements, but at the end of the day, I think we've got a pretty good product going on. Also, Kim Johnson and Bridget Hadley, who had made the tip possible, which we probably couldn't have done the project without. I also want to thank Legal and Paul Crafts and his staff for doing a great job and being very helpful throughout the project. Also, at the very beginning, Dennis Pope with NCAA, Kathy Morrissey with College World Series, Roger Dixon with Mecca, and Steve Rosenblatt, too. All did some nice things for us. Operationally, we hope to be open about June 7th or 8th, which we'll have a meet and greet down there, which you'll all be invited to. And by the way, I want also to give a special thanks to this council. Everybody except Mr. Jerome, who did nothing. You know, I heard your comment last week, so I -- but I do want to thank all of you. We could not have done this, obviously, without the blessing of this council. I want to thank you again. The -- we will be -- we're going to -- with your blessing, we will license the entire property. It will all be licensed. It will all be fenced, so that we won't always need SDLs, even though we'll have the capability of doing that if we want. The -- as you know, there's going to be not only ice cream there, but also Blatt Beer and Table, which will be a new restaurant concept. There's a menu there I passed out for you to kind of take a look at, which is a new concept we're really excited about. And it will also preserve the memory of Rosenblatt, which is dear and near to many of us, especially Councilmember Grenant and myself, and many others. So with that, we're here for any questions. Obviously, we know that we have to complete some items to get approval from permits, but we will be doing that. Here for any other questions you might have, and again, thank you for all of your support.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, I notice you do have some couple of chicken offerings on the menu. Chicken and waffles? But has anybody ever told you that you resemble Colonel Sanders?
Actually, yes. There was a big joke going around in Lincoln with a caricature, and they were calling me Colonel Sanders, so it's not the first time.
Not the first.
I wish you had a restaurant.
Yeah. Remove the approval.
That would be contingent. Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Pass.
Stothert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Councilmember Jerome passes due to potential conflict. Item 14 is the application of Village Canvas and Cabernet LLC. DBA Village Canvas and Cabernet, 6457 Francis Street, for a Class I liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm Kathy Burns, 7910 Dewey Avenue, and I'm here on behalf of my husband and I, John. We're opening a nice specialty shop in Exarbin Village called Village Canvas and Cabernet, where we hope to have painting classes for anybody of any skill level and also enjoy a glass of wine or beer along with that. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Stothert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15 is the application of Reas Corporation, DBA Chicago Doghouse, 3113 North 108th Street, for an on-sale beer license.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Stothert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is the application of DJ 2B Incorporated, DBA Cruises Bar and Grill, 8634 F Street, for a catering liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda item number 17 begins now. Are there any proponents? Please state your name and address.
Jeff Gaul, 8722 M Circle, and this is my wife.
Denise Gaul, 8722 M Circle. We're here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Stothert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is Delise Cakes LLC, DBA Delise Cakes, 12317 West Maple Road, for in addition to their present Class C K liquor license, location of a sidewalk cafe. We also have a communication from Jay Davis regarding permits.
Public hearing on agenda item number 18 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, sir. My name is Matt Spiker, 1125 South 103rd Street, appearing on behalf of Dolce Cakes. With me today is Gina Sterns, the owner proprietor there, and we're here to address any questions or issues you guys might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Stothert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is Port Corporation Incorporated, DBA Anchor Inn, 5413 South 72nd Street, for in addition to their present Class C liquor license, location of an extended existing outdoor area. We also have a communication from Jay Davis regarding permits.
Public hearing on agenda item number 19 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Jeff Ivan, 5413 South 72nd Street, here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Stothert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 20 is Sergi Mart LLC, DBA Corner Food Mart, 2430 South 24th Street. Appoint Jonathan D. Smith, manager of their pending package liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda item number 20 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Jonathan Smith, I live on 2568 South -- or North Fowler Ave. Manager of the Corner Food Mart on 2430 South 24th. No questions?
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Stothert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 21 is Sugar Hill 2 Incorporated, DBA Sugar Hill Package, 562729 Ames Avenue, requesting to appoint Joyce Westbrook Davis, manager of their present package liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda item number 21 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hello. My name is Joyce Westbrook Davis, 8218 North 36th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, here to represent Sugar Hill Package Liquor.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Stothert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 22 is Corey Inc., DBA Welcome Inn Tavern, 2332 South 24th Street, requesting a special designated license for June 9th with music ending at 12:00 midnight.
Public hearing on agenda item number 22 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Brian Peck, 2513 South 31st Street, here to do our annual SOB fundraiser for the city of Omaha. All proceeds that we make off of this, we donate back to the city of Omaha.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Grenant. Just to say thanks again. I think this is your fourth or fifth year in a row that you have done this for the benefit of our anti-graffiti program. I can tell you, things are changing, the complexion and problem that we're doing, and the things that you do behind the scenes, we really appreciate, and this event certainly helps. Thank you so much. Motion to approve.
Thank you very much.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Stothert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 23 is My Place Incorporated, DBA My Place, 2229 Lake Street, requesting permission for a special designated liquor license for June 1 through June 2 with music ending at 1:00 a.m.
Public hearing on agenda item number 23 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hi. My name is Celeste Smith, 3019 Titus Avenue.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Celeste, if you could, would it be okay if what we've done here on the council is try to limit, you know, especially around residential neighborhoods, ending the music at midnight? Would you be okay with that? Okay, thank you. I make a motion to approve subject to ending the music at midnight.
We'd actually amend it and then approve it as amended, so we'll amend to midnight.
Okay. We'll amend it to close at midnight, to music stop at midnight.
Still serve.
You can still serve till 2:00, but the music is over at midnight. Okay?
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Stothert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 23 is My Place Incorporated, DBA My Place, 2229 Lake Street, requesting permission for a special designated liquor license for June 1 through June 2 with music ending at 1:00 a.m.
Public hearing on agenda item number 23 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Katrina Coffey. I'm vice president of marketing for Big Red Kino. We're located at 11248 John Galt Boulevard, and I'm here with one of the owners to ask for approval for the Kino applications that you have before you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Move the approval. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Stothert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held May 29, 2012, the third reading in public hearings on agenda item numbers 9 through 10 shall be laid over three weeks to June 12, 2012, for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held May 29, 2012, the third reading on agenda item numbers 9 through 10 shall be laid over three weeks to June 12, 2012. We'll take items 12 and 13 together. Item 12 is a Class I for Nodo Zestos Operating LLC. DBA Zestoblat Beer and Table, 610 North 12th Street, for a Class I liquor license. A is a communication from Jay Davis regarding permits.
Public hearing on agenda item number 34 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Stothert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. Jerome, pass.
Yes.
Potential conflict. Now we'll go to item 35, which was removed from the consent agenda at the request of Councilmember Gray. It's a resolution to approve an agreement with African American Empowerment Network for partial funding, $600,000 for partial funding of its Step Up Omaha Job Training and Work Experience Program.
Public hearing on agenda item number 35 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Willie Barney, Empowerment Network, 2221 24th Street. Want to, first of all, thank the council for your incredible support on this initiative. Five years ago, in the city of Omaha, summer employment programs had pretty much gone away, and some community organizations, based on comments from residents, started to begin those programs and tried to basically create a program of 150 youth, and since that time have gone various places in the community to gain support. And I just have to tell you, personally and professionally, want to thank the city of Omaha for stepping up this year and then also challenging the business community and other philanthropic organizations to do the same. We are moving forward and looking forward to hiring 500 youth and young adults this summer from all over the city and putting them to work in nonprofits and for-profits and all across the community, so we want to thank you for that. And I wanted to just personally thank, again, and on behalf of the Empowerment Network, the city council for your support, Mayor Jim Settle and in his office, Ida and Stacy, the planning department as we were working through this proposal, Kit Deesing, James Thiel, Rick Cunningham. We have about 20 community partners from north, south, east, and west in Omaha. And also, I just want to read into the record the businesses that have stepped forward. American National Bank, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Lindsay Manufacturing, Woodman of the World, Conagra Foods, Pinnacle Bank, AT&amp;T, Coventry, UPS, Omaha Steaks, Cox Communications, Wells Fargo Bank, Physicians Mutual, Security National Bank, American Harvest, and Maxi Walker. And again, the organizations that are partnering with this from all over the city, the Empowerment Network, Boys and Girls Club, NCAP, Heartland Workforce Solutions, the Hope Center for Kids, Impact One, Latino Center of the Midlands, Metropolitan Community College, Omaha Economic Development Corporation, Omaha Public Schools, the Urban League, and Victory Boxing Club. So again, we have grown from 150 the first year to now having the opportunity to put 500 of our youth and young adults to work this summer, so we want to thank the council for your support.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take the opportunity to, first of all, thank the Empowerment Network for taking on the responsibility, the fiduciary responsibility, for running this program. I would also like to thank the planning department, Jim Thiel, and others for, first of all, helping us find the money, the community development block grant funds, and then putting it to good use. I remember when we first started this program five years ago, Mr. Barney and I were pretty much at the program with a few volunteers, and we were running all over the place trying to find dollars to operate. I see Bridget Hadley, before she became planning, before she became in planning, she was a volunteer for us at the, at our first summer jobs program, and thanks very much to Michael Maroni, who has been kind of the backbone of this effort since the beginning, and where we are right now, I think, is really good, and we need to take into consideration also the work that Senator Brenda Council did in terms of the, in terms of the 300 Youth Conservation Corps jobs that are also going to be available, probably about 150 of those are also slated for youth and young adults in the Omaha community. It is laudable that the Empowerment Network and the city joined forces and went across this city. We made sure that all elements of the community were included and all sectors of the community were included. We had application programs at north, at Blackburn, at south, and at Burke, so we were inclusive of the whole city, and this is an effort that I hope will eventually grow, and hopefully next year, we can put 1,000 people to work. But again, my thanks to all of those involved, and I make a motion to approve.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I also just want to take a second to thank Councilman Gray on this issue, because I know it was something he worked quite hard to research and figure out a way to use the CDBG funds in this manner. Since we've been here for three years, I guess now, we had struggled to find a way to steer more CDBG dollars towards economic development, and in my opinion, that's what this is. It's workforce development, it's job training, with ultimately the goal of having not only summer employment, but having the possibility of these youths to work for the companies and the partners we've identified long-term as a career, which benefits the entire community. And it's also crime prevention. This is part of what we're doing to keep youths off the street and to keep them gainfully employed, so in my opinion, this is a wise use of these funds. It's an impressive list of partners, including the Empowerment Network. We appreciate working together on this, and I look forward to supporting it today.
Ms. Stothert.
Thank you. Just a quick question for Mr. Barney, if you could come back. I meant to ask this this morning, but I'll ask you now.
Willie Barney, Empowerment Network, 2221 North 24th Street.
Thank you. I know that you said that this program is available to use all over Omaha, but it is the schools that you named, as far as the interviews, were primarily in Omaha Public School District. Are you reaching out to the other school districts?
The focus, because of the CDBG funds, is focused on specific neighborhood revitalization areas, so that's where we focus most of our attention, but we did open it up citywide in Omaha.
Within that, within the Omaha Public School District, though?
No, Omaha City of Omaha.
Okay, so it is available to use out in west Omaha?
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
As a matter of fact, our largest response was when we had it at Burke, and there are, again, people from all over west Omaha.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Grenant. Let's see, 500 kids with sledgehammers. We could really make a dent in the demolition thing that we got in this. Just a thought.
Yeah, let's start with the civics.
Do we have a motion in a second? Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Stothert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is Port Corporation Incorporated, DBA Anchor Inn, 5413 South 72nd Street, for in addition to their present Class C liquor license, location of an extended existing outdoor area. We also have a communication from Jay Davis regarding permits.
Public hearing on agenda item number 19 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 45 is an ordinance to accept the bid of ABM Janitorial Services North Central
No, Omaha City of Omaha.
Okay, so it is available to use out in west Omaha?
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
Yeah, matter of fact, our largest response was in, when we had it at Burke, and there were, again, people from all over west Omaha.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Garnett. Let's see, 500 kids with sledgehammers. We could really make a dent in the demolition thing that we got in this town. Just a thought.
Yeah, let's start with the civics.
Do we have a motion and a second? Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerome? Stothart? Thompson? Festerson? Garnett?
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held May 29, 2012, the third reading and public hearings on agenda item numbers 42 through 43 shall be held on June 12, 2012. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held May 29, 2012, the third reading on agenda item numbers 44 through 49 shall be held on June 5, 2012. The public hearing on these items are today. Ordinances on second reading. Item 44 is an ordinance approving a redevelopment and tax increment financing loan agreement with the Barker Building LLC to implement the Barker Building LLC Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 306 South 15th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 44 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have. Representative of the developers also here.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 45 is an ordinance to accept the bid of ABM Janitorial Services North Central Incorporated in the amount of $12,348, $48.68 per year for, to furnish carpet cleaning services at various community centers in the Motomaclean Ice Arena.
Public hearing on agenda item number 45 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 46 is an ordinance to transfer $2,260,907 in unencumbered fund appropriations in the 2012 budget from the Parks Department to the Public Works Department for the purpose of providing funding for the parking garages.
Public hearing on agenda item number 46 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothart.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Mr. Stube if he could just briefly explain what is going on here with this ordinance and this transfer.
Bob Stube, Public Works. What's happening is, and there was a resolution that was brought to you last council meeting to essentially accept a parking study that was done through City of Omaha, MAPPA, MECA, and also the Downtown Improvement District. And one of the recommendations from the parking study was a consolidation of the parking garages and some surface parking lots with the on-street parking, which was managed by Public Works. The parking garages and everything were managed by Parks Department. And again, the recommendation from the study was that all of it should be consolidated under one department, and therefore, this is one of the pieces to make that happen, is essentially transfer that enterprise fund that was managed by Parks over to Public Works so that all then revenues from the parking garages and the parking meters can funnel into that enterprise fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item 47 is an ordinance to approve an authorized payment to HP Financial Services for a lease agreement extended over a three-year period for computer equipment.
Public hearing on agenda item number 47 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 48 is an ordinance to amend Section 2162 of the Omaha Municipal Code prohibiting ticket scalping to remove the obsolete reference to the Quest Center Omaha to apply regulations to facilities renamed in the future.
Public hearing on agenda item number 48 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 49 is an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Section 48112. To provide that appeals from orders or notices regarding improperly located trash containers be heard by the city administrative appeals board rather than the building board of review.
Public hearing on agenda item number 49 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 50 is a resolution confirming the appointment of Amy A. Hossi as a member of the Transit Authority Board of Directors to serve a five-year term. It's over from April 24th and continue the public hearing.
Public hearing on agenda item number 50 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Stothart? Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held May 29, 2012, the third reading and public hearings on agenda items numbers 51 through 56 shall be held on June 12, 2012. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meetings being held at May 29, 2012, the second reading and public hearings on agenda item numbers 57 through 60 and 62 shall be held on June 5, 2012. Agenda item number 61 is an ordinance to amend Section 23177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by adding an employment classification entitled "Digital Forensic Analyst." We have a request from the police department to allow withdrawal of the ordinance.
Second.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerome? Stothart? Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
We'll go to the supplement. It begins with agenda item number 64. It's a resolution to approve the professional services agreement with DLR Group Incorporated for professional architectural and/or engineering services relating to the Music Hall, Mancuso Hall, and other possible building and/or site improvements in and around the Omaha Civic Auditorium in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Public hearing on agenda item number 64 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, Steve Oltman, Chief Staffer, Mayor Settle, appear here today, of course, to encourage you to approve this. I realize it's an additional study of many studies that have been done, but we have, I would like to hand out, if I may, to you all, a list of... This list provides you, I think most of you have seen this, but I call your attention to the study that Exarban Trust paid for. All the studies that have been previously done have been paid by nonprofit groups. No tax dollars have been spent for these studies. The first one was done, and with me here today, by the way, is Ken West with DLR Architecture, who was involved in these previous studies on the Civic Auditorium. I think you've all know that those studies show that it's extreme cost in order to maintain the perpetual aspect of city, the Civic Auditorium being available. I would call, then, to what you just received, a couple of the pages here. On the study that was done, again, by DLR regarding the feasibility of this continuing, you can see that in the back of it, the second page of that study, it points out that it's very difficult for the dance groups and other groups to be housed anywhere else in the city. And the Music Hall and the Mancuso facility is used more than most people realize, including me. If you look at the list of the dance recitals and the competitions in 2012, those groups are there, and the annual dance competition is coming up here shortly, and that's totally sold out, and there's 2,500 seats in that facility. And then it lists also, the last page lists the annual events of the non-dance aspects using those same facilities in the, that we're talking about. So again, we've got two major studies done. The thing that it does not, these studies do not answer is how much is the demolition cost going to be to tear down the facility, and what is the feasibility and the cost of maintaining the Music Hall in the Mancuso area? There's a lot of requests for that. The mayor has visited with all those groups, mostly in the facility, they pointing out the benefits and the need to maintain that area. Is that feasible or not? We don't know. I think we need to find that out before we make the ultimate decision whether the civic continues for a few more years or whether we shut it down on a specific date in the very near future. So we would encourage your support for this study. I think you need it, I know we need it, to make the final decision on the last date use of the Civic Auditorium. And then if you have specific questions on what the study might accomplish more than I have, Ken West is here to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothart.
Thank you. I guess I'll ask a few questions of Mr. West, if you could come down.
Ken West with DLR Group. My home address is 3009 South 113th Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
All right, and I, to my knowledge, this next study, which would be the fourth, the one question that we really don't have answered is the demolition cost, but I'm, the way I understand it is the main reason for this next study is to find out if the two buildings attached to the Civic Center are worth saving. Is, would that be correct?
If I may give a little bit of history, in 2007, we looked specifically at the Civic Auditorium. That was the, that was the focus of that study. In 2011, we were asked to come back and update those costs of the Civic Auditorium and take a look at the Music Hall and Mancuso from a physical assessment standpoint. And that was, that was part of that study. And so, as, you know, taking a look at it, if it is decided that Civic Auditorium no longer wants to be and has value to the city, if that was removed, number one, can it be? And we have said, yes, it can be. Does a Music Hall with some improvements and adding supplement, you know, ancillary spaces to support that facility, can that be a viable facility, you know, for the City of Omaha and the needs of the City of Omaha for the future? And how much money would it have to be put in to do that? Specifically, in the study, we would have talked to the user groups that would potentially use the facility, what would their needs be so that we can identify, because we have to be, you know, part of the demolition of the Civic Auditorium if that's what's decided, takes away the, you know, the mechanical and electrical plant of that facility, of the complex. So it has to be built back or an alternative solution needs to be taken a look at. So as I, as I take a look at it, you know, it's identifying what are those, what are those costs, what are the benefits that the City of Omaha would have, you know, so that, you know, yourself and the administration can make a good decision on what to do with that, you know, with that piece of property and those facilities in the future.
I mean, it seems to me of the information that we have is that the Civic Center itself is kind of, it's a building that's past its usage. I mean, the cost alone on the repairs and the changes that we need to make, $30 million plus, I mean, that seems prohibitive to try to do something with that facility. But it seems odd to me that, I mean, you're talking about a four-block area here, and if you are going to tear down the Civic Center, it seems like for purposes of redeveloping that area, why would you want to limit or restrict a potential developer by leaving two old buildings on that site? It doesn't make a lot of sense to me. It seems like that if we recognize the civic is going to need to come down, it doesn't seem to me like it makes a lot of sense to say, how can we save these other two buildings and restrict what a new developer could do there? I know there was a comment in the paper about perhaps moving the new police headquarters there. Well, we've studied that, the building commission has studied that twice. In fact, we've had a study that we just came out with about six months ago and paid about $110,000 for the police study. But I don't see, it seems like the best solution would be to have another developer come in and make use of that property. But it seems like we're really restricting or limiting a potential developer if we want to keep those two older buildings there.
And that may very well be the right decision. I mean, at this point in time, I think that's what we're really talking about here, is giving you the information, saying, is that the right decision? Is it best to go that direction? Or is that facility have a useful benefit to the City of Omaha in the future? And I think that's really what we're talking about, is giving you the tools and the information to make those good conscientious decisions.
Do we have an idea of the property value of that area, of that facility?
I do not right now. I do not.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
I think what we're doing here is just trying to delay the inevitable, you know. There's been, as Ms. Stothart pointed out, there's been a number of studies have been completed. The one study showed close to $30 million to fix up and keep the entire civic, and so, under any scenario, it's going to be a very expensive proposition, and I just don't think that the City of Omaha has the money for that today, so.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerome?
No.
Stothart?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Festerson?
No.
Garnett?
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
The motion to adopt fails on a two-to-five vote. Item 65 is a resolution confirming the appointment of Eric L. Butler as a member of the Airport Authority Board to serve an unexpired term of Wayne's Censor commencing upon confirmation by the city council and expiring March 12, 2014.
Public hearing on agenda item number 65 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents?